All right, I'll gavel, gavel a sign. Uh, Roseanne, rise and do the pledge of allegiance. And Wally, can I ask you to do the pledge of allegiance for us tonight?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John Wally. Okay. Welcome, everybody, and welcome to the new members of the board. Happy to have you here tonight. And, uh, first off is, are there any additional agenda or consent calendar items? I'm not aware of any.
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to public delegations. Is there anyone that would like to address the board during the public delegations time? Don't let everybody get up at once. Okay. Seeing that there are none, we will move to the approval of the minutes. Uh, the first set of the special meeting on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve the special meeting minutes of November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three is submitted.
Second?
Do I hear any discussion, any changes that anyone's aware of? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Abstaining? Nope. All right. Uh, the next set of minutes are the, uh, public hearing minutes of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the public hearing minutes of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three is submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
I hear a second, Roseanne. Uh, any discussion, uh, changes? Hearing none. Uh, let's have a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Motion carries. And the final set of minutes are the regular meeting of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three is submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Oh, we have Candace. Thank you, Candace. Um, all, uh, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? There are none. All right, we're gonna turn our attention now to the consent calendar.
One second, please. I just got a text that they're saying there's no sound.
Says that the mics are working.
Okay.
Not muted.
He says, perhaps moving them closer to us.
All right, we'll try that. All right, let's hope that's, uh, service volume, maybe. Oh, here we go. I think we maybe have, uh, get the speech one.
We kept it on feedback.
Yeah. See if that's better.
Okay, let me just see, let's see if he texts me back.
I think we had it.
Okay, I'll wait.
Okay, let's, we'll move in.
Yeah, we'll move on.
So the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for December sixth, twenty twenty-three in the amount of five thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents.
I'll second.
Candace seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, at this time, uh, we have a special guest here tonight, and I'd like to recognize the Eastline High School Boy Soccer Team with their coach, Paul Wally Christensen. Welcome here this evening. Um, you know, very proud of your team. It was a tremendous accomplishment. Now, my understanding is that this is the second championship in your career here?
Yes, yep.
And what, the first one, was it two thousand two, I believe?
Two thousand two, correct.
First one, and so that's a, uh, that's a pretty long time. That's a huge accomplishment, and, uh, we're very proud of you. Thank you for coming tonight. You know, uh, it, it's, it's so much on the parents and the coaches and, and the staff at the high school. They do so much to support the students, and this is just another wonderful example of how great our system, school system, works here in Eastline and the support the students get. But it wouldn't happen without support of parents. So to any parents that are here tonight, you have our thanks and, uh, really, uh, good wishes and, and moving forward, and we wish you all the best, and I'm sure everybody sitting here has bright futures. You're, you're a great, uh, great young man, and, uh, we appreciate your help, Wally, and what you did.
I wonder if we might ask each one of the team members to stand up and introduce themselves?
I think it's a great idea.
Hello, uh, my name's Apollonia Montehado. Nice to meet you guys.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to have you here, man.
I'm Tristan Sagan. Nice to meet you.
Nice to have you here.
My name is Dominic Stefanski, and it's nice to meet you guys.
You too.
Uh, my name is Max Montehano. Thank you for having us.
My name is Ryan Novick, and thank you for having us.
Uh, I'm Luke Salem. I'm happy to be here.
Uh, I'm Ben Johnson. Thank you for having us.
I'm Xavier Stefanski, and thank you for having us.
I'm Nico Frogamini. Thank you for having us.
Um, I'm Justin Keefe. It's an honor to be here.
I'm Evan Warney. It's a pleasure to be here.
I'm Finian Gates. Uh, thank you for having us.
I'm Brand Lee Anetti. Thank you for having us.
I'm Alex Rendell. Thank you for having us.
And I believe we might have an assistant coach here as well.
What's that? Uh.
I'm Jeff Hamler. I'm an assistant coach. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
And I'm Paul Christensen, uh, the head varsity coach, uh, at the high school in my thirty-sixth year. Um, these guys clean up pretty well. I mean, I certainly enjoyed this season. I enjoyed the community support. If you were at the game in Hartford that day, Eastline filled the stands. I mean, it was a great, great day, so we'll see you at the light parade. We'll be afloat, number four oh five. So, thanks again for having us.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Another Eastline High School graduate?
Yes.
And former student.
There you go.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
You're welcome. And there's a lot of fun stuff on the agenda tonight, but if you guys wanna go, we get it. We won't be, we won't be offended.
We appreciate it.
Great job, guys.
All right. Take care.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you again.
That was awesome.
This is almost as much fun as the party. We're just getting started.
Yeah, last.
That's good.
That was great.
They really did, nice. Nice job.
Well, Mr. Burke.
Tough act to follow.
That was great.
Okay, so, uh, the next on the agenda is the fishing dock subcommittee. For some reason, I can't remember. But we are, uh, going to move, uh, to, uh, appoint a subcommittee, and, uh, do I have a motion?
Do you want me to, here, I'll do it if you want.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, and before you do, let me just.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Okay, yeah. Um, so we tried to find, uh, some individuals on the board that would have the interest to review. Uh, there are three, I think, three, or three or four, three.
Three.
Uh, fishing lease, uh, fishing, uh, dock fishing lease, leases that we have to review. And, uh, so I'm thinking that Jason Diebel, Don McKenzie, and Roseanne Hardy, uh, would hopefully, uh, be able to review, uh, the leases and who has them and, and make recommendations for, uh, who they should be assigned to going forward. So if I have a motion.
Sure. Um, move to appoint Jason Diebel, Don McKenzie, and Roseanne Hardy to the Cheney Dock Fishing Lease Subcommittee.
Do I have a, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
We shall arrange our own meeting schedule.
Yes, that would be fine. Yeah, whatever is convenient, at the convenience of the three members, uh, so you can review the leases and then, uh, decide what you're going to do with them as they get renewed. So, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries, so. Jason, Don, Roseanne, thank you, uh, for agreeing to review them and, and move forward with, uh, who the leaseholders will be for the next season. At this time, uh, Jason, would you, uh, do me the honors?
Should I move to appoint?
Yes.
I move to appoint Ann Chikalo on Lebanon Village Drive, Eastline, to serve as deputy first selectman with a term to expire December first, twenty twenty-five.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, second by Candace. Uh, all in, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Great, thank you, Ann.
Sure.
All right, uh, three B, appointing a deputy.
Move to appoint Jason Diebel, five McKinnon Place, Eastline, as second deputy first selectman with a term to expire on December first, twenty twenty-five.
Do I hear a second? Well, I'll second it. I second it. Uh, is there any discussion? Um, okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Are there anyone abstaining?
No.
Uh, motion carries, and Jason, thank you. Appreciate you serving as the second deputy. The next item on our agenda is the, um, the D O, uh, I'm sorry, um, yeah, the, uh, connect DOT Master Municipal Agreement. Uh, I took a quick look at it, but I really wanted, uh, to spend more time just, uh, reviewing it. I'm sure we'll be able to, uh, approve it, but I didn't wanna rush it, and I really wanted to have a few days to study it. So I'm going to table that till, to our next, uh, meeting.
Thank you. I don't, I hadn't been able to review the entire proposal either.
Yeah, it's.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I, I, I think it's, uh, substantially the same as, as the prior one, but there are a few changes, I believe, and, um, we need to think it through a little bit. So, the next area is a discussion and possible action on the twenty twenty-three, uh, D E S P P Homeland Security Grant. So, um, do I hear, uh, a motion?
Um, move the following. Uh, resolve that the board of selectmen may enter into, into, with, and deliver to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and further resolve that Daniel R. Cunningham as first selectman of the town of Eastline is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the board of selectmen, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. The, the undersigned further certifies that Daniel R. Cunningham now holds the office of first selectman, and that he has held that office since December fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, seconds. Uh, so this allows me to, uh, sign certain documents related to homeland security, uh, as may be necessary. Uh, any further discussion? All right. Those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No abstentions, so, motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda are the ex officio appointments, and I believe everybody's had an opportunity to, uh, review, uh, the, the appointments, and I did try to, uh, you know, structure it so no particular person was overburdened with those duties, and, uh, items and areas that would be of interest. Uh, so I hope, uh, hope I, hope I did a good job with that for everybody. Uh, so, um, I'm seeking, uh, I don't, I don't.
I don't think there's a motion on that.
No, there's no motion for that.
Yeah.
So, uh, so, it's in the record, and, uh, these are the appointments.
Oh, there's a motion?
Oh, there is?
Oh, sorry, I didn't see it. Okay.
I actually didn't say no, but I do see it as a.
Oh, okay.
It is?
All right, yeah, there is, I didn't see it. I thought.
We'll figure this out.
All right. Move to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five ex officio list of assignments as submitted.
Second?
Okay. Um, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And I might add, for the benefit of our new members, that if you're unable to attend one of your ex officio assignments for any reason, any one of the rest of us can fill in for you upon request.
Right, and, uh, everyone's always been very good about trying to help each other out if, you know, there are sometimes conflicts that occur, but are unavoidable. Okay. So now, the next section is a little bit tedious, but it's necessary, and, uh, we hope to, uh, to, uh, make good progress tonight on, on the appointments, uh, for boards and commissions. So, um, Ann, you've agreed to start off, and then we're gonna.
Okay. Move to appoint Michelle Royce Williams, two Barrett Drive, Nyannick, to serve as a member on the Water and Sewer Commission on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January fifth, twenty twenty-six.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, seconds. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Justin Porter, Deputy Public Works Director, as an alternate SCARA representative for the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, seconds. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone, anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now, the next, we're gonna do a group of four, and Roseanne is gonna, uh, handle these next four appointments.
Move to appoint Justin Port, uh, sorry, wrong one. Move to appoint Eileen Harris, twenty-seven Stonywood Drive, Nyannick, to serve as a member on the Commission on Aging on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight. Move to appoint Mike Beckett, eighty-four Hope Street, Nyannick, to serve as a member. Move to appoint Jason Joseph Palacio, forty-three Sleepy Hill Road, Hollow Road, to serve as a member on the commission. Move to appoint June Bangston, sixty-seven Walnut Hill Road, Eastline, to serve as a member on the commission. And that's it. Terms to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, seconds. No discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Michael Mines, one Goldfinch Terrace, Eastline, to serve as a member on the Cable TV Advisory Council of Eastern Connecticut on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The next is another group that, uh, Roseanne will handle.
Move to appoint Harvey Beeman, eleven Green Valley Lakes Road, Eastline. Move to appoint Penelope Howell, Howell Heller, sixty-one East Patagonic Road, Eastline. Move to appoint Stephen Dinsmore, fifty-seven Chesterfield Road, Eastline, to serve as an alternate member on the commission for the Conservation of Natural Resources. Term to expire January third, twenty twenty-eight. The preceding appointments to the commission with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, seconds. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Michael Finkelstein, Eastline Police Department, as the Emergency Management Director for the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, all right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Julie Wilson, Eastline Emergency Management, as the Emergency Management Deputy Director for the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roseanne? Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Nicholas Menapace, thirty-eight Hope Street, Unit ninety-seven Nyannick, to serve as an alternate member on the Historic Properties Commission on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, Jason, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Donna Masson, sixty-eight Dean Road, Eastline, to serve as an alternate member on the Historic Properties Commission on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Mark Christensen, sixty-six Gressi Hill Road, Eastline, to serve as a member on the Historic Properties Commission on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roseanne, thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Anthony Ottenasio, ninety-seven West Main Street, Nyannick, to serve as a member on the Historic Properties Commission on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, Candace, thank you. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Leonard Salter, three Pepperidge Lane, Eastline, to serve as a member on the Inland Wetlands Agency on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roseanne, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Doreen Rhine, five Ermaidale Place, Eastline, to serve as a member on the Inland Wetlands Agency on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Willis Berger, thirty-two West Patagonic Road, Nyannick, to serve as a member on the Inland Wetlands Agency on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Roseanne? Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to appoint Donald Femister, eighteen Latimer Drive, Eastline, to serve as a member on the Inland Wetlands Agency on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Candace. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Eric Cantor, twenty-seven Wells Street, Nyannick, to serve as a member on, on the Eastline Harbor Management Shelfish Commission on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Don. Um, all, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Stephen Dinsmore, fifty-seven Chesterfield Road, Eastline, to serve as a member on the Eastline Harbor Management Shelfish Commission on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Donald Landers, Jr., three Beach Avenue, Nyannick, to serve as a member on the Eastline Harbor Management Shelfish Commission on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Don, thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Michael Strube, thirteen Bayview Avenue, Nyannick, to serve as an alternate member on the Zoning Board of Appeals on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Stephen Carpenter, twenty-five Harvest Glen, Eastline, to serve as a member on the Zoning Board of Appeals on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, well, Roseanne?
Roseanne.
Okay. Um, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, sorry. Move to appoint Kevin Mace, twenty-five, uh, Patagonic Drive, Eastline, to serve as a member on the Zoning Board of Appeals on behalf of the town of Eastline with a term to expire on January third, twenty twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Candace. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see. The next, uh, item, and thank you very much for reading all those, uh, Roseanne and Ann. Next item is to authorize the first selectman to sign check registers. So, we have a motion?
Okay, yep. Move that the board of selectmen delegates to the first selectman, Daniel Cunningham, and upon the absence or disability of the first selectman, to the deputy first selectman, Ann Chikalo, the board's obligation to sign the orders of the board of selectmen on the town treasury for payment of regularly budgeted expenses of the town, with the exception of those of a capital nature over fifty thousand dollars where bids are required, and further that the signed orders covering the period subsequent to the previous regular meeting of the board be presented at each regular meeting of the board for review. In the absence of the first selectman and his deputy, the first selectman may delegate the obligation to sign the orders of the board of selectmen to the second deputy first selectman for payment of the expenses of the town.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, thank you. Those in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, it's talking about the exception of those of a capital nature over fifty thousand dollars. Is that number, is that from the, like, the charter or something? Do you know? Or, I just didn't know where that came from.
Okay, where that fifty thousand came from. Is that the new limit on the, in the chart?
Was that something from the, like, the charter revision or something?
Good evening. For those of you who haven't met me, my name is Tracy Collins and I'm the town attorney. And to answer your question, there is no charter provision providing for anything regarding this motion.
Okay.
On who's able to sign checks for capital expenditures over fifty thousand dollars. There's no mention of it in the charter at all.
Okay, got it. All right, thank you.
Is that an issue?
Yeah.
Okay, no, this question.
Know where it came from.
All right, so, did we have a second? Do we have a second?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next is to authorize the first selectman to sign grant applications.
Move that the first selectman is hereby authorized and directed to sign all grant applications and execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of East Line for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four through fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and to do and perform all acts and things which he or she deems necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all applications contemplated by such documents.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, Candace. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So, we got, the next item on the agenda is discussion and not really possible action, but just a discussion of the Board of Selecting Code of Ethics. I just thought, starting out, it would be good for all of us to have a copy of the Code of Ethics and those are the goals that we, you know, hold ourselves out to and I thought it would be handy if everybody has a copy in their packet so they can refer to it in the future. I guess if there's any questions about the, you know, the limits and certain attributes of it, we can always discuss that at another meeting unless anyone has any concerns tonight that they want to address. I just thought it was important to kind of set the tone. Any other comments?
Are we gonna also discuss the regulations of the Board of Selectmen? Or is that, or is this in that also?
They're both together, so, yeah.
Okay, so, I have a comment on that one.
Yes.
Is that okay? All right.
Yes, of course.
So, under Rule Three, it says the regular meetings of the Board of Selectmen shall be held on the first and third Wednesday of each month called at seven-thirty. So, I think that needs to just be amended to say seven o'clock.
Yeah, we should change that. So, I don't know if we really should list that as a separate agenda item at some point to make that change. So, everybody does, make sure there's adequate notice. So, maybe at a future meeting, we can just put it on the calendar to change the time for the rules, just so we don't have any issues with notice.
Okay.
Any other observations that we should be aware of from anyone? Okay. Just think it's a good opportunity to look it over as we get started and we move forward. So, I just wanted to make sure everyone had a handicopy. The next area is to amend the charge for short-term rental subcommittee. And, so, I have, in the packet is the revised charge. In the past, there were two members of the Board of Selectmen that comprised two of the eight members.
One from the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, there was one from the Board of Selectmen. That's right, one from the Board of Selectmen. And that member was Ann Santoro and also Ann Thurlow was for, a member from zoning. And, so, they're no longer on those, in those roles, but they have a lot of history and they've deliberated with the other members. So, rather than really make them start from square one, I really appreciated the experience of both Ann Santoro and Ann Thurlow. And so, we've changed the charge to allow them to continue to serve and then in place of a member from the Board of Selectmen, we're gonna have an ex officio from the board.
Okay.
And hopefully, that'll preserve the continuity of the committee. You know, from my experience and my reference, it's kind of like a jury. Once a jury starts to deliberate, you don't wanna put in an alternate because there's a synergy that takes place. So, I thought it best to leave them both in place and appreciate their service on that committee. So, that is the reasoning for it.
I concur. I attended most of the public hearings for this subcommittee and there were numerous comments. Many people, one of the hearings, there were hardly any seats left open. And so, when you have a public hearing or two like that with so many people speaking, I think it's important that, as you say, we continue this because the public has generated a genuine interest in this, pro and con. And if you aren't at those public hearings, you don't get the spirit of it, the atmosphere. So, it's not only the spoken word, but it's also, as you said, the general synergy.
Right.
So, I think that this is a very smart move on our part and hopefully, the other members will agree.
I think at one of the hearings, they actually had, like, over a hundred people speak. I mean, it was very well-attended and a lot of people have a very strong opinions on this. I had just one other question. So, it says here, the representative of the Board of Selectmen shall serve as a non-voting ex officio member of the committee. So, that would mean that Ann Santoro would be a non-voting member?
Says a representative, so, she's no longer on it as a select, so she would be a voting member now. Because she's no longer.
Right.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, so she would become a voting.
Voting member, okay. And then same thing then with Ann Thurlow?
Yes.
She would also be voted, okay.
That's right. That's my understanding.
Would it be an ex officio from zoning taking Ann's place?
No, they're.
No, they're gonna, they're gonna stay.
So, they're gonna, they're gonna stay on the, on the, on the commission.
But Ann is no longer on the zoning commission, so would it be wise to have someone who's actually sitting on the zoning commission to be an ex officio to make that connection?
We want, we want, well, we wanted to have feedback back to the Board of Selectmen. So, we were gonna, rather than have a member of the Board of Selectmen on the committee, we're gonna have an ex officio. So, a board member that will attend the meetings and report back to us what's going on.
Dan, may I? May I say something or no?
No.
Okay. So, I can't agree more, actually, to keep the continuity with the people that actually started with it. But my question is, the ex officio part, is that going to be one member of our board or is it going to be alternating similar to what we're doing on the Board of Ed?
My thought is to have one member.
Okay. And have you identified that member or asked or?
I was going.
I'm certainly interested.
Are you interested?
I am.
Well, I was really originally going to, I was going to ask Jason if you wanted to do it, but.
I will defer to my colleagues.
You would, all right, and you would like, I didn't want to overburden anyone and I was just trying to, you would like to do it?
Sure, yeah. We can also share it too. It doesn't matter. But I think that it, yeah, I wouldn't mind.
Well, then, I, well, then, let's get this, let's get this on the books and then I will make an appointment for ex officio. Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out to the board that this commission has to comply with the minority representation statute. So, I haven't analyzed who your position of the commission and who you're appointing. But all boards and commissions in the town, in accordance with the charter, have to comply with the minority representation.
I appreciate that input. Thank you for that.
Maybe we can figure it out.
Are you an U or an D or?
We should balance out because one's an R and one's a D.
Ann is a, Ann Thurlow was unaffiliated.
Oh, that means she doesn't.
Well, while we do this, let's, let's get the resolution and then let's discuss with you the logic for who we should appoint to, to, does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept amended charge for the short-term rentals subcommittee.
Okay. Do we hear a second?
A second.
Okay. So, we've, any further discussion on that part of it?
Shall we take up the town attorney's point here?
Well, we're gonna do that, we'll do that next. We'll get this done and then we'll move on to who we should appoint.
Yes.
Okay, so, bearing any further discussion? All in favor of amending?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So, we have revised the AD hoc short-term rental committee. Now, the next order of business is to appoint an ex officio from our board. And, and as the council rightly pointed out, we have to maintain the minority representation balance on the board. So, Ann Santoro is a Republican and Ann Thurlow is unaffiliated. She's gonna remain on as, Ann Thurlow is unaffiliated. So, right now, we have a Republican. And what, Candace, if you were to be appointed, what is, if I may ask, what is your?
It's, it's an R.
You're an R?
Yeah.
So, then there shouldn't be any, am I, am I, am I correct, Tracy, that we would be okay then if we're replacing an R with an R?
Yes, as long as the commission is balanced right now. So, you're just.
You have two Democrats, two Rs and the rest unaffiliated.
Yes.
I think we.
Yeah.
But since Ms. Carlson is going to be an ex officio, non-voting member, then the minority representation rules wouldn't apply to her.
Oh, because simply it's liaisoning the information.
Yeah, since you're not a voting member.
You're not voting, okay.
So, we would be okay then?
Okay.
Am I right?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Well, then, and, okay, so, under, that understanding, I move to appoint Candace Carlson as the ex officio member from the Board of Selectmen for the AD hoc short-term rental committee. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Candace, for bringing, taking on the additional.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Geez, we're doing swimmingly tonight here.
Swimmingly, I like that.
All right. Some movie I saw. Okay. Okay, so now, we're up to the ex officio reports. And I don't know if, is any, do we have any tonight? Roseanne?
No, not since our last meeting. A zoning will meet tomorrow night for their first meeting where they'll be electing the chair and secretary.
Okay. And, let's see.
An ex officio member of the Board of Ed, but I was at their meeting last week. Would that be appropriate to?
Well, do we have an ex officio?
Candace was there too.
We both actually were there. We thought that there was going to be a rep. We weren't sure, at least I was not sure, Jason, but we both could probably give some input.
Yeah, well, that would be, that would be great.
Yeah, I mean, do you wanna go first or do you want me to?
Well, why don't we just go up the aisle here? So, Jason, if you have some comments?
There was an acknowledgement of some really special student work, including a young woman who created a device to detect gas leaks in her devices in a museum in London, part of their permanent collection now. There was a little share about a girl who wrote and published the first of a trilogy. She's a sixth grader.
Oh, I saw that in the paper, yeah.
It was really cute and special. Starts to STEM, was granted a five-year contract with the Board of Ed after some pretty kind of emotional public comment. There was, there was a, not a dispute, there was some discrepancy about how to appoint the next person who vacated Candace, who, seat that Candace vacated. And the, it seemed that the board just really wanted to get it right. So, they deferred to the fourteenth or put a special meeting on the fourteenth just to deal with this appointment so they could seek counsel from town attorneys. And after that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so I would concur with all of that. And I just want to say the name of the book that the little girl actually published, which was great, was The Crystal Quest. And I just, I love, I love the fact that they had so many acknowledgements, not just of the students, but also the Viking Valer Award for one of our incredible teachers, Alicia Rose from Lilly V, who is absolutely outstanding within the community and does so much incredible work. So, it was a good night to be at the Board of Ed, which it was always a good time for me to be at the Board of Ed, but it was wonderful to see all those acknowledgements. I would have, the, the appointment, I'm glad that they deferred and are going to get things in order. That way, they'll come back on the fourteenth and.
Oh, yes, that's great.
Yeah, but it was, it was a great meeting.
Good. Thank you. Thank you both for your comments. I, I don't have any yet tonight, but, Ann?
I went to the Inland Wetlands meeting last night and basically, they kind of did a few, like, cease and desist orders. And there's a certain property, I think it's Overbrook Lane that I think they're gonna end up with a public hearing on. There was a lot of people talking about the property. So, that was really about it.
Okay. Candace, I know you already spoke. Don, you don't have any ex officio, any, anything else to offer us?
Yes, sir. Second Tuesday. I need a pass. I'm, for planning, I, I need somebody to fill in for me. I'm a celebration of life up in the state of Maine.
Oh, so this, not, not every time, but this time?
This time. I hope not every night.
No, no, okay, I get you. No, of course. We'll figure that out.
What day is it?
It's second Tuesday, which is the twelfth.
I might be able to help. I'll take a look. You know, maybe we all can take a look at our calendars.
I can, I can do it.
Oh, okay.
Thank you so much.
Great. Now, we all help each other out here, so.
Yeah.
Good.
Unnominated.
There you go. Great. So, well, we've had a good first meeting so far. Let's see. Now it's time for the first election report. It would be me. So, today, I went to the Southeastern Connecticut Resource Recovery, well, they call it SCARA, Resource Recovery Authority. And, you know, the topic of the discussion was refuse, waste. You know, we all take it for granted that the, we put the container out by the street and the truck comes by and it all disappears. But it's never that simple. It has to go somewhere. And there are some, there are some issue, really serious issues for the future on dealing with waste from municipalities. And so, the discussion today was about the challenges that face the, the public authorities that deal with, with household waste, the things we throw out every, every week. You know, I was heading into the meeting thinking, wow, this is really gonna be doom and gloom and it's gonna start costing us a lot more money to get rid of the waste and how are we gonna deal with it and is it even gonna be possible at some point? But there is, there's always a silver lining and there was at the meeting. And there are things that we can do as, as homeowners, as people in our society, as members of the community, if we can get educated as to how we deal with household waste. And if we are more careful with what we do, with what we put out by the street, we can do a lot to mitigate these problems into the future. And there's a lot of initiatives out there and some very interesting ones. I won't spend too much more time on that. But I think one of the things that I want to follow up on during my tenure here is to really focus on education, educating the public. As, you know, it's, you know, one mistake by someone putting the wrong thing in the wrong bucket can, can mess up the whole, the whole truck full of cardboard. You know, you put oil in it, well, they can't use any of it. And it's, it's, that's really adds to the problem. So, if we can all understand those realities and try to be careful and try to educate people, I think we can do a lot in our town and in our state to, to make the problem less serious. So, you'll be hearing more from me down the road as we get more information and I'll try to share it with the board.
Well, I have a confession to make. I'm usually very careful with my disposal items and I was shocked last week to find that I, myself, have been in violation. I have been putting glass in the recyclable bin. And I'm guilty of this transgression for at least two years.
Well, at least you weren't the one that put the lawnmower in with the recycling. But that, I guess that's another story. But, yeah, I mean, people really don't understand. They go, it's metal, it's a lawnmower, throw it in the recycling bin. I mean, that just, it screws them up really bad. And so, we gotta, we gotta understand it. We gotta educate people. And that's what we're gonna do. So, let's do it and let's see what we can do here to solve this problem. So, that's that. The other thing I went to was the, you know, the project I ninety-five and Route one sixty-one. It's GM two, is the, they're the construction engineers. They have an office down at the corner at the end of one sixty-one and Route one, that little complex there. That's where their office is. And I went to a meeting there and they do have a website and they sort of have an, not interactive, but it's kind of like, you know, like a drone view of the project. And it's, it shows where it is now and then it, you know, shows what the future will look like. It's very interesting. But just to give you some perspective, this is a hundred and fifty million dollar project. We're thirty million into it. So, you've seen a lot going on down there and a lot of things happening. That's only thirty million of it. There's another hundred and twenty million dollars of stuff to happen down there. And it's really gonna be dramatic what they do, but it's, it's gonna be a good thing. It's, I know it's frustrating right now. They've done a great job of minimizing the impact on the community, even through all the blasting, which I think a lot of that, maybe all of it is done. They really were very careful in doing that and trying not to, you know, mess up our traffic patterns. But there is something that's gonna happen and they're hoping by, before the end of the month, a little surprise for the community. There's a milestone that they're gonna reach with that project that I think will be something that people are pleased about. So, I'll let them put it out on their website when they're ready, but it could be the next couple of weeks. So, it's really moving along nicely, that project. But what an engineering feat when they go six lanes by six lanes. It's really gonna be something, how they do it. And anybody that's, you know, an engineering quarterback, you want, you want a side, what do they call it, a sideline? But anyhow, what?
Armchair.
Armchair. Any, any of the armchair engineers out there, it's fascinating how they're gonna do it. I was quite impressed. This weekend, this is one of the great weekends in East Line, Saturday the ninth, we have, at eleven o'clock in the morning, we have the Nyannick Jingle Bell Five K. So, that's always something that people look forward to and it just gains more and more participation every year. So, I encourage anyone that's able to jog or if you can just walk, participate.
You guys can join our team if you like.
Me?
Yeah. Do you guys wanna join?
I, I can't.
I mean, you can walk, you can stroll, you can jog.
Yeah.
You have a meeting then.
I'm gonna see what I can do.
You have a meeting then.
But I'll be, I'll be down there.
It'll be fun, yeah.
The, the other thing, of course, everybody knows, we got the light parade. I guess it's from six to eight. They'll be blocking the road out from about five o'clock to nine o'clock. In different years, I've been in the parade for different reasons. My friend, Jason Devoe, we were in a band together and we were on a couple of floats the last couple of, couple of years. I won't be able to be with you. I don't know if you'll be able to be with them either. But anyhow, this year, I get to walk in front of the parade. We all do, right?
Yeah, so do we meet you down there?
I guess we'll meet at Columbus Avenue.
Columbus Avenue?
And then we'll, we're gonna lead the parade and do our thing and we'll meet, Sandy will be on the green waiting for us. And there you go. So, that's this weekend. It's gonna be a good one. And I hope everybody can attend the parade and participate in the Jingle Bell Five K. That's, that's, that's my report. And I don't have any communications at this point. Been on the job two days, no one's communicated with me yet. They didn't give me a phone. I got about two phones on me now. They didn't give me a phone. I got about two phones on me now, though. But anyhow, uh, that, that's it. Uh, is there any public comment? Nothing, you got nothing?
I was thinking about it.
How about, where'd you get that code? I mean, I like.
I'm glad you mentioned waste, but I might not have anything to say right now.
Okay, but that's gonna be a big focus and, and something down the road. Okay, well, we will talk. Come see me. All right, uh, so there's no, uh, communications, no public comment other. Uh, I've given my selectmen's response. I guess I did that out, no, there's no response because there was no, uh, delegations. So, with that, I'm, if there's anything further, can I go to the order here? No? Adjourn.
Move to adjourn the regular meeting of December 6th, 2023 at 7:50 PM.
Second? This is the second.
I'll second.
Yeah, this is the second. All right, I guess I, I did the gavel too soon. I'm a little bit anxious. You know what it is, you're new on the job, you just kinda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good.
Thank you, everybody, for all the cooperation I got tonight in helping me improve my first board selectman.